To three days in a row where that would happen regularly, for example. And so that's something that we've never experienced before. So what we're finding is that we're really having to change a few different things about the way we're working. It's becoming increasingly difficult for physicians to look after all of the inpatients in the hospital and work in the emergency room or deliver babies and see their own patients in the hospital and run the after-hours clinic at Walmart, which is something else that we're quite committed to as a group to try to keep seeing. And we're noticing that a lot of the patients there, or at least a higher proportion, are patients who don't have a family doctor. So it used to be like five years ago or 10 years ago when we opened that clinic, most of those patients still had family doctors. They were locals. It was a pretty quick thing to go through. Now many, probably about half of the patients I'll see on a shift there, don't have a family doctor at all or haven't seen anyone for a long time. So I'm doing a lot more ongoing care there and kind of patching things together for them so that they don't have to go to the emergency room for things. But it's much more challenging than it was when it was just quick things who were being managed by the family physicians. And we've also struggled with hiring staff there. So all to say that, a few things we've started doing. We've come up with a new position at the hospital, which is called a hospitalist. And those are also family doctors, but they're mostly, they're all actually coming from outside of our current system. And they will, they come in and do a week at a time where they only see hospital patients. The patients they're seeing are those patients who don't have a local family doctor, which at times can be half or over half of our hospital inpatients now. Again, five years ago, that was not the case, but it's becoming an increasing proportion of our, of our hospital patients. So those people are coming in. We're subsidizing them as a hospital to make sure that they are earning enough that it's worth their time to come in for a week. And then we're also helping to subsidize their housing because it's very hard. We've discovered through starting this program, it's very hard for them to find inexpensive housing for a week at a time in this region. We've also noticed that a lot of our nurses are struggling to find housing, even the ones that are actually trying to move here from somewhere else. They're, they're just having trouble on a nursing salary, especially if they still have debt from their school. It's really difficult now to get a mortgage to cover you for a home in Fergus or Alora if you are coming with debt from nursing school. And we're seeing that not so much yet with our young physicians, but I think we're going to in the next year or two. We've also started bringing in more emerged staff, emergency room physicians from out of our little group. So you'll start to see physicians when you go into emerged who are not local. They're also coming in from other places and they're just coming for their shift and then going off. Sometimes they work in a few different emergency rooms or they have different jobs in other places. But again, we're starting to see that we need to help subsidize their housing a bit as well when they're coming in. They can't always, aren't always safe to drive home after they've done an overnight shift, say from 11 till eight in the morning. To drive two hours back to Toronto is not always safe, so we'll get them to stay somewhere, et cetera. If they're doing a few shifts in a row, then they may want to stay somewhere or if the weather is poor. So those are just some changes I thought I would highlight that have happened in our community. Some of them are really positive. It's wonderful bringing in this, these, you know, these new hospitalists or they're young, they're super keen, they're, they're very smart. They make me feel a bit tired, but that's good. They're, they've been a real boon to the community. And same with these emerged docs coming in, they've been great. And then I think just in general, in terms of support from you guys, it's, it's great to have, you know, the ongoing marketing of our community, support from everyone on how beautiful an area this is to live and also to work in. We're extremely proud of our hospital and our clinics. I think we're doing a great job. Our learners coming through are always super happy with our rotations. They love being here and spending time with us. And a lot of that is to do with the patients who they get to see and how, how welcoming everybody is and putting up with people who are, you know, maybe not the fastest or maybe a bit more beginner and have to go check everything, but it's super helpful when people are kind to those learners coming through and a lot of them want to come back here. I think the housing piece is something we're all grappling with across sectors, but certainly support with housing and both short term and longer term for staff that do want to stay here longer is very helpful. And then I think those are my three things, actually. That was the housing, the learning and the marketing, learners and the marketing. And I'm happy to take any and all questions from you guys. I didn't want to, I didn't know how much to prepare, so that's all I prepared. And then you guys can ask me questions if you want. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you for that presentation.
Yeah.
So we'll take questions from council. Councilor McDonald?
Through you, Deputy Mayor Jefferson. Hi, I'm Lisa McDonald.
Hi, Lisa.
I sit on the Groves Hospital Foundation.
Yes.
So I'm very cautious of what you're saying for sure.
Yep.
One thing I've noticed a lot lately too is I have family up in Bruce County. I've noticed Bruce County, County as a whole, is throwing a lot of money at doctor recruitment, housing, those types of things. So from what you've presented, you know, are, are you thinking maybe council should look at the budget for rental homes that they could use? I, I'm just trying to clarify what would be the best to help you now because this is a bit emergent. You know, we can't, seeing our hospital without staff after we fundraised so much for that hospital is, is disheartening. So is that, you know, an ask for our budget? Just because it's budget time.
It's budget time, yes. Yes, so I hear. Okay, so, so a few answers to that. I think that Bruce is all, everywhere across Ontario, we're struggling at the moment. I'll say that. It's a, I think COVID was, we all just kind of sailed through it, or sailed is the wrong word because it was really, really hard, but we all sort of clung together, maybe is the better phrase, and survived. And now things are kind of going off the rails in a way that none of us really anticipated, to be honest. So I think it's across sectors, the shortage and just people. And so yes, I think more financial support may be needed than we, what we're used to coming to you for. I know that, you know, we've been having some meetings with, with Dan and with other people around to sort of come up with exactly what the support will be and what the numbers are attached to that, which is so, you know, we're so thankful for that because it's, it really means a lot to us that, that that's important to you guys as well. And it's hard to do it all on our own. And we are definitely in touch with other municipalities as well. And if you guys can be too, that's really, I think we all need to, as much as we're kind of competing, it's kind of also we all have to be in this together. It's not a, we can't start, you know, fighting over the scraps of, of people and, you know, we're nurses and PS, we're all human beings. At the end of the day, we have to find where is good for us to live with our families, but where we can afford to live as well and where will support us. So, so yes. How's that for my answer? Thank you.
Question from Councilor Eweway.
Thank you through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. So again, for clarification.
Yeah.
We are aware that traditionally and up until this year, we've allotted $20,000 per annum. Am I to understand that you're asking us to consider rising that number?
I, I think so. Allison. Okay, she told me not to, she told me not to give a number, so I'm trying not to give a number because I don't think we're there, but I don't want to. I don't want to get in trouble.
Potentially. So hi, I'm Allison Armstrong. I work at the hospital. So potentially, this is such a evolving thing we're all trying to figure out together. So everything from housing to how we're going to bring people in to what's going on our medical trainees' minds in terms of where they're choosing to go. We know accommodation is a huge challenge for us now. As Sarah was indicating, our hospitalists, like we're putting them up probably once a week trying to get these people in and it's to keep our hospital going, so it's necessary. So we're trying to look at all different areas, avenues, and anything's up right now. Will we need more funding over the year to help us with this? Definitely, but we don't want to also be irresponsible and just say, we know, you know, we're going to slap an amount at you and, and, and ask for that back, not knowing yet what that plan is. All we know is in the next year, we're going to have to up that ask and we need to allocate the funds responsibly. So we have been talking to Dan as he sits on our recruitment committee just about housing options, some creative thinking. So definitely, I just don't know how to approach that though. So if that, if that helps answer your question, because it's an evolving.
Right there. With your permission, I'll go for further follow-up. Thank you through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So to call or to expand on that, could you explain to all of us sitting here exactly what those dollars are used for? I know it's not just for bringing them in. Maybe some deeper understanding of why you're going to need an increased budget would help this council to come to a better decision.
So the past year, what we did is we didn't have a lot in place for, say, a recruitment, dedicated recruitment website. So that we got in place. All our marketing, social media, getting the word out that we are hiring, we need, we need you. And we had to be different. Like our social media campaign was very focused on being deliberately different and why they should come to us versus our neighboring communities of Guelph, Kitchener, Cambridge. And for us, it's about the small feel, it's the rural, and we are still rural, but that's where we're, we're, we're growing at the hospital in the point that our volumes are high, so it feels like big city. But at the end of the day, we're still a rural model where our family physicians support the hospital. So we have things like free parking, everybody knows each other. We're all about wellness and balance and we want to maintain that. So we've been putting in social media campaigns, marketing. We have to pay to go to recruitment fair. So I was just in one a couple of weekends ago at Grand Band for Western University students. There's one coming up in Collingwood for, it's called the Rural Ontario Medical Program. So all of those, we have booths that we take, we need items to bring to kind of attract them, to get them to our booth. Lately, it's been accommodation is, I would say, the biggest income that we've had to put out for just to cover people. And when they're in, we're trying to put a welcome basket together because we want it to be the best experience for them coming in. I know some of these things sound so frivolous, but they do make a difference when you're trying to go to other communities and you're competing. So again, every tax dollar that we spend, we're very conscious and conscientious about how are we doing this? Does this make the biggest difference and are we going to get people in? So if that helps explain some of it, I would say accommodation will be the main one coming up this year. And sorry, if I cannot, I could go on about this for now, so sorry. Just don't get me going. The other thing is compensation. And just so people are aware, it's, you know, emerged physicians, say in Guelph, would be paid more than they are in, in Fergus. And it's based on volumes, there's all kinds of formulas for that. So little things like if you can put them up at an Airbnb and that's complimentary makes a huge difference versus having them to go down the road and they get paid a little more and it's a little extra. So we have to little, work a little harder, but again, it's well worth it for what we hope to attract and retain, so.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you for that. Any more questions? Councilor Adams?
Yes, through you, Deputy Mayor. Do we have any estimates on how many people within Centre Wellington are without a family doctor?
That's a tough, no, no, no. So most patients have to register what's called Healthcare Connect. So the provincial government holds that data and information. So we are provided that, but we don't feel it's a realistic list. And it's a bit of a long explanation, but you are rostered to a physician. So if you move from Brampton and you have a physician in Brampton and you come here, in order to get on that Healthcare Connect list, you have to de-roster with your physician in Brampton before you can roster on this list. So most people don't want to do that, therefore they do not qualify for the list. So what happens is some of our physician offices will, if people call in, some keep a list themselves. Years and years and years ago, the hospital used to keep a list, but it's very arduous trying to keep on top of it. You basically have to call people every month or so to say, hey, did anybody pick you up? Did a physician take you? So it's, it has to sort of stay with Healthcare Connect right now and it's all about data and following that information. So it's, it's difficult to answer that question. Based on Sarah's experience, though, I think as you're saying, when people come, especially to the walking clinic, over half of them are without a physician right now.
Yeah. And I think, you know, the other thing to take, keep in mind now is the expansion, the growth of this region, right? So I think the numbers we're hearing, so it's an average family physician right now, especially if they're also still working in the hospital, will probably take somewhere between six and 1,200 patients, depending on who they are. So that could be 20 to 40 family doctors needed in this region in the next 20 to 30 years, right? Based on our growth numbers. So it's, it's a huge jump from what we have now. It's actually kind of boggling. I, I get a little stressed seeing all these new subdivisions coming up because I really don't quite know where those people are going to come from. And another issue, which I didn't bring up because it's, is actually office space as well. So office space is quite expensive relatively, or can be. And especially for new grads coming in who actually are also buying furniture and outfitting computers, Band-Aids, like just staff trying to do all that within their first month or two when they have several hundred thousand in debt usually. It's quite a bit, and maybe they're trying to buy a house as well and take on that mortgage. It's quite a bit. And there isn't easy office space right now. Our own offices are pretty much full, so we're sort of, we're working on that too.
Yeah.
Any more questions? Mayor Waters?
Yes, thanks for coming out tonight and telling, telling the story. I, I had the opportunity to do a lot of door knocking over the last couple of months and, and I would, I would say it was the third, even though it's a provincial responsibility, was the third most questions I had was, what about family doctors? So, you know, we're having an issue. And so it was amazing how many people were having that same, same issue. And the question was, you know, if you're the mayor, how do you, how are you going to resolve this? And that's a difficult question. I know we have, I've been doing this a long time, but in terms of being on council and we had in the past, we had, and this may have been before your time, but the Dr. Englishes and those, those folks who did an amazing job on recruitment. And I, and I obviously see that, be going back to that kind of, those types of very tangible programs. But where the, I think the uptake and I think where council needs to get their heads around is like, and you mentioned this, that doctors and nurses have a lot of expenses coming in. If there's ways that we can sort of manage that for them, it makes it more appealing when they come here. So you'd mentioned offices, you mentioned accommodations. It's not necessarily cash for them in terms of their, what their, what their salary is, it's but those expenses that they have to deal with. And, and because they come out of school with large debts, you know, they need to figure a way of how they can manage that. And if we can make that a little more interesting for them and in with sort of obviously all the things that we have to offer in this community, it makes it a very inviting place. And it's not a question of we're, we're trying to steal from other places. It's really we're, we're trying to make a situation here that is comforting for them. And also, and we, we're a growing community. And, and over the next 10, 15 years, we're, as you know, we're all going to double in size. So this issue is not going away anytime soon, unfortunately. And so we're going to need to figure out sort of do, not necessarily out of the box kind of things, but maybe a little bit out of the box types of scenarios here to make us a very attractive place for people to come and, and wanting to stay, especially with your hospitalist. That's an interesting term. So are those, what is, are they someone that you recruit or they have the short term? What, I'm not quite sure of that. I've not heard that term before.
Yeah, no, it's a fair question. So hospitalist is, is kind of a newer term, especially to someone like me. It didn't really exist when I graduated. But they basically are usually family doctors, not always. They might be internal medicine people as well, who just come into a, to a place and work for shifts. So currently ours, for example, would work eight till five for seven days in a row. And they just look after a set of hospital patients. That's all they do for that time. So they see the patients, they order anything that needs order, they follow things up, they speak with families, very important part of it. And then they just, yeah, keep everything running for that patient. In some bigger hospitals, so for example, I spoke with someone last week who's from Oakville, working in Oakville, they have 650 inpatients. So they have 25 hospitalists that run their whole, all of their inpatients. Here, we're, and so those people would also have night shifts sometimes, et cetera, because they actually do 24-hour coverage. And so they would be hired maybe by the hospital, usually by the hospital at that point. And it's a whole program where they only work at that hospital and they're considered maybe employees of the hospital. And so they have a shift schedule, kind of like working at a factory, basically, where they do like a week on, a week off, a night week, a day week, a week off, whatever, like through a rotation, and they're all doing that. Here, we're not there yet because our family doctors are still looking after our own patients. So like I just got called about someone and I'm, I'll go in and see them in a bit. But here, we have these unattached patients, we call them, who don't have family doctors, and that's who our hospitalists are looking after. So for us, we're starting to establish a core team. We've got about 12 right now who just take turns doing weeks. I suspect that might whittle down to a smaller number who will be a core group and then some who will just come in and more fill in. Yeah. Yeah. The other word I used was locum, so that.
That's the term.
Yeah, so locum is, is also that concept where someone, so I might hire a locum if I'm on holiday for two weeks. I might pay somebody to come in and look after my practice for those two weeks so that I'm on holiday or I'm away for that time. And in that time, they look after all my patients, my hospital patients, my paperwork, anything that needs doing. And then, so for somebody like that who comes in, they, they also need a place to stay. So that would be another housing situation that would be helpful. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Any more questions? Well, I guess that's everything. Thank you so much for coming to do your presentation.
Thank you. I am going to run. I'm not going to stay for the rest of the meeting, but thank you so much. I really appreciate it and totally feel free to get in touch if you guys have more questions or whatever. It's never a problem.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. I just have to step out due to a conflict of interest with the next presentation and I'm going to ask Mayor Waters to assume the chair.
We're back. Okay, we're going to talk now about the administration 2023 Fergus BIA budget. And we have Talia here.
So firstly, thank you so much for having me. Yes, is that better? Awesome. I'm here for Fred today, so if I miss any questions, I'm so sorry. I plan to give you all the answers I can, just maybe at a later date. Firstly, greetings to the mayor and council from the Fergus Improvement, the Fergus Business Improvement area. We'd like to inform you that there is a new executive for the Fergus BIA for the years 2023 and 2024. It is a trick and trick mix of both new and familiar faces, and this is a great way, a great way to keep projects moving along. At our annual general meeting in, on November 2nd, the following appointments were made. I, myself, Talia Jenkins, from the Red Door was made chair. The vice chair became Bonnie Shorthill from Jablee. The treasurer is Joyce Reamer from the Fergus Scottish Shop. And members at, Lemonden Berries at large became Miranda Holmes from String Theory Yarn Shop, Natalie McNeil from the Fountainhead, Charlene Staken from Studio Boutique and Deb Care from the Bookery. The year 2022 was challenging as we, of course, started out under COVID rules, but we still managed to make some things work. Most, all of our events were able to be held in person with the appropriate precautions in place. These included our first ever Fiber Festival. The Fergus Medieval Fair was a roaring success with record-breaking attendance ever. The Twilight at Templin Music Evening series was a great success with only one minor consolation due to a tornado warning, so not our fault. There was a food truck night that was hosted by Impact Breality. Downtown Fergus hosted many events over the week of, weekend of this Fergus Scottish Festival. The perennial favorite, the Fergus Classic Car Show, saw unprecedented attendance. The Halloween Haunted Walk brought over 1,000 kids to downtown in search of goodies. And our annual sip and shop, holiday shopping nights continued to be one of the must-do events in downtown. Shops were open into the evening and provided refreshments and discounts while scattered across the town were tree lightings, carolers, burn barrels, horses and carriage, horse and carriage rides, and score of other things to do and see, all beautifully lit by our Across the Street banner decorations. In addition to all these, the BIA took on two special projects in 2022. Project number one was in conjunction with the township and RTO4. We were able to secure a federal tourism relief fund grant. With this money, we were able to fully augment the Provost Lane project. We now have a fully movable, safely-built meeting area in the downtown Fergus on Provost Lane from May 1st to November 1st. The street between St. Andrew's Street and St. Patrick closes to vehicular traffic and becomes a community meeting space. It is handicap accessible and once accessed has enhanced seating and space for mobility impaired persons. The space can be used for eating, to play games, to conduct workshops and classes, or just admiring the beauty of downtown. It features sun protection benches and metal picnic tables. The Fergus BIA has been overwhelmed with the public response to this great place and with the funds that we have ensured, with these funds, we have ensured that it is accessible to everyone in our community for many years to come. This has and will remain a collaborative project requiring the cooperation of many organizations. And we are exceptionally proud to have been able to move this project to higher than it participated. Project number two, the county's decision without seeking advice of the various BIAs within the county to move the biweekly garbage collection has been exceptionally detrimental to the downtown Fergus. Refuse encourages vermin and bugs, which is malodorous and unsightly. The situation has become untenable. So we met with the county and other, and our concerns were brushed aside and they flatly refused to return to the downtown, the downtown to weekly garbage collection. If anything, downtown Fergus is, needs more than frequent collection, not less. Notwithstanding, the Fergus BIA has, BIA has been left with no alternative but to arrange the private garbage collection of their district with our at-er-ode expense. We started with a pilot project along St. Andrew's Street. Our private collection occurs on the alternating weeks of the county service to ensure that members can enjoy weekly curbside collection. This was very complicated and difficult to arrange. However, it has been done and the project now moves along smoothly in our zone. So in 2023, the Fergus BIA will be expanding the collection project to our full area. With the great news from the past and the evening, evening brighten, sorry, and an even brighter future ahead for 2023, the Fergus BIA humbly presents you with our 2023 operating budget, which will be passed our annual general meeting. For the first time in more than a decade, we are asking for a 6% levy increase, which is really only $3,900. And the bulk of that request is to fully fund the private garbage collection services. For 2023, we will see a return of the favorite programs from the past and a few exciting new ones. So watch downtown Fergus and we look forward to seeing you at, for lunch on the Provost
Thank you. Questions? Councilor McDonald?
Through you, Mayor Waters. Thank you so much for coming. I did, we had a hearty discussion today about garbage. I found out today, there's three levels of garbage that we're dealing with. And I am very aware of the garbage issue and something that I'm pushing to have more discussion with. And yeah, so I want to ask you, how is it going since you implemented that, that garbage?
We've had some really positive feedback. Not all businesses require the additional pickup, which is understandable, but those things such as restaurants who don't have access to their own bins find it exceptionally helpful. This is also coupled with rentals of the main downtown buildings. There are some apartments that seem to keep it in their closets and just dump it like seconds after it's been collected. And so it's become a running issue. And while we understand that sometimes there, there's a rhyme and a reason to why decisions are made, unfortunately, it has been one that's impacted the downtown. And to have the weekly pickup that we've put the money into has been really well received.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Councilor Eweway?
Thank you through you, Mayor. You know, a huge fan. Thank you for all the work that the BIA has done and continues to do. Two questions of clarification. One, you said that you want to extend it into the full area. Can you explain what that is as opposed to your zone where you are right now?
Yes, so the pilot project ran from, I believe, Tower Street to just over where Fergus is, so just past St. Patrick, just to see if the need for it was there. Our catchment area is actually much larger than that. We run up to Planet CPU and we also run up behind Provost to where Home Basics is. And then I extend down to the Brudalvin as well. So there's a much larger area that still hasn't been privy to this service. It's just we wanted to run it to see if there would be a response and there was. And we have had positive responses from the individuals who would be excited to have it available to them.
Thank you. Follow through, and again, just to clarify, so I understood this to be about the restaurants and businesses that had food that would bring vermin and bugs. Homes, we all get every second week. So I'm, I don't, you know, I'm hearing you, but I'm trying to make sense of what is the actual purpose? With great respect, just to clarify from my brain, are you looking to increase service for the restaurants? Because there aren't restaurants up there either, in either space, either up by Planet CPU or in the back of Provost. So I'm just trying to clarify who this service is meant to serve.
So what happens with this is technically it is for the businesses on that strip, and it would include the restaurants. When we talk about the residents and the tenants that specifically are part of the issue, they're attached to the downtown businesses, so something like, let's say, about Jonies, like those block of residences, because they have no other place to put their garbage. They include it on the curbside. And there seem to be, and they seem to be individuals who have quite consistent output, regardless of how many times it seems to be collected. So if it's infrequent, we can have anywhere from like 20 bags sitting there right by the water.
From two weeks?
From about two weeks, and then the river rats like to come up and visit. So, yes, it is mostly aimed at the businesses, but it happens to be in conjunction with the tenants that happen to exist on the downtown core.
And finally, with great respect, can you just clarify? So those apartments don't have garbage bins in the back to put the garbage?
A lot of them don't, unfortunately.
And what would that take?
That is a conversation we were trying to have as well. There was no actual answer. There's issues as to where it could be put. There is a conversation about certain parts of the Riverwalk, like being, whether it's like snow removal issues or so on and so forth. So it's a conversation we'd love to have. We'd love to look at any kind of alternatives that are available. This was just kind of like the immediate bandaid that we could provide.
Thank you, Talia.
You're welcome.
Counselor Evi, or sorry, thank you, Counselor Evi. Counsel, Counselor Wilton.
Thank you, Talia. I appreciate the update and everything. That's great. I think my question's more for Mayor Waters, actually, related to the garbage, of course. Since you sit on the county council table, is there any way that the Township of Center Wellington can initiate some of those conversations on behalf of our downtowns?
Yes, and we will. Yeah, no, we need to have those types of conversation. We, I've had conversations with them in terms of the, the staff understanding that our community, especially in our downtowns, are changing. They're becoming very more urbanized, and, and the need for various types of service need to increase. And this is, in my mind, that would be part of the conversation, or even sort of a greater understanding for council to, or for the county to understand that, that it's, the, the requirements are higher than they were in previous years. So that needs to have a discussion with them. Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, Mayor Waters. Moving on to 8.4, McLean, from the Chair of the Alora BIA.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Mayor Waters and Township staff. Thank you for having me here and listening. And this is my first presentation of this kind of topic, so if I'm missing something, please feel free to ask questions, okay? So to talk about our membership, my name is McLean Han. I'm the Chair. Our vice chair is Sabina Mars from Doggy Daycare. Our treasurer is Fiorc Guido from Magic Pebble. And then members at large, we have Kathy Bastian, Kathy Sullivan, Kathy Dultry, Deb Crop, and Sarah Salmona. So we have a robust executive, because quite frankly, we were having difficulty reaching quorum. Okay, so to go over successes last year, you know, we did obviously see COVID restrictions subside, which was great for all of our businesses. Starlight Shopping, in this past year, it was another successful event, as it has been for years for the Alora BIA. And then one very large budget item from our 2022 budget was Monster Month. A large percentage of our budget went to Monster Month that year, and that was because that event is a month-long event in Alora and really important to our locals, to our businesses, and to the people that visit. So we felt it was time for Sensational Alora to get a cash injection. So that's where that went. Now, for our 2023 budget, we are asking for another levy increase, a 7% levy increase. I will get to my justification for that in just one moment, but I'm gonna go over a couple other line items that I think require attention first. I'll skip past the administration, that, that makes sense. But I would like to highlight that in the 2022 budget, even after two large increases to our budget, administration represented 50%, almost 50% of our budget, which is a necessary evil, but we would like to start having more money to play with. Now, a couple of changes in the, in the budget for 2023, I'll highlight under beautification and revitalization. There is a project fund for $6,000 under beautification and for $7,000 under revitalization. Both of those essentially are going to represent the unknown, which is East Mill Street. East Mill will be hopefully finished construction in this year, and as such, will face a fair amount of financial requirements from the BIA, garbage cans, planters, Christmas lighting for the light standards. So we feel that that money is sort of there as a placeholder, because we're gonna need it. And we're not exactly sure how much it's going to be, but with the rising cost of everything, we suspect that that money will get eaten up very, very quickly. Okay, so I can, I can echo Talia's thoughts about garbage. We have been having the same discussion at the Alora BIA regarding garbage collection, restaurants, stores. I'm sure you saw the garbage mountain that was in front of Wilkins Jewelers. It's pretty bad, and a lot of it does come from residents that live above the buildings. It's not just restaurants and businesses. It's the residents that aren't necessarily following the garbage schedule. So there does need to be a solution there. We have a subcommittee within our BIA this year to address that and to speak to that, and hopefully, we can see some, some changes in that regard. Okay, so again, talking about East Mill, that's a big project that we're looking forward to this year, and finally getting it to look as beautiful as the rest of the downtown does. And I know that the businesses on that side of Mill Street are very excited to have light standards and Christmas lighting and, you know, a sidewalk. So we're very excited for that, and we look forward, as a BIA, to sprucing it up. And in the meantime, perhaps having some levels of promotion to remind people that those businesses still exist and are still open, because that's gonna be great, a great challenge for them, as it was to West Mill over the last few years. Now, the levy increase, again, to reiterate, we would like to have less, we don't want 50% of our budget going to administration. And when, when we look at another levy increase, I know it's, maybe it's a hard pill for some to swallow. It's my feeling that, and our feeling, I should say, that good events, big events, cost money. Promotion is expensive, talent is expensive, and in order to do it right, we need to have more. Basically, if you look at our budget from previous years, you know, Starlight Shopping is only, is really the only major event that we host, and we would like to start doing more. This village is growing at a, at a very fast clip, as we're all aware, and our profile is rising dramatically every year. We're getting more and more attention, and I feel now is the time to capitalize on that growth and have bigger events and better events that promote our village. And in, in terms of return on investment, a successfully-run event in the BIA catchment, we'll see those dollars pumped back into the economy very quickly, in my opinion. And I think that about covers it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from McLean? Counselor Wilton?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jefferson, and thank you, McLean, for the presentation. It's appreciated. This question might be for both BIAs, but has there ever been any discussion of sharing administration costs? Because there's 25 in the Fergus and 32 in the Alora one. So it's quite a considerable amount of money if there was some kind of cost-sharing or shared admin staff or something like that. So I was just curious if that's ever been discussed, or if it could potentially be discussed.
That has not been discussed, or not, not when I've been present. In terms of, just to clarify, in terms of merging the BIAs, that's not something of interest. But emerging administration costs might be something, a very creative solution. Create one full-time, well, it's, it's not even full-time. But, you know, to create, yeah, that would, I think that's a great solution, and that's something that we should, could definitely look towards, because, you know, they're spending the same amount, I'm sure. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Other questions? Counselor Evi?
Thank you, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And I'm not sure if this presents any kind of conflict of interest to our mayor. It's just a question. With Riverfest happening in Alora, do you not support one another in some way? Do they help you? Do you help them? Probably best if you don't say anything, but do you know if, like, like, it's such a big deal, and it's happening right in the smack of Alora, and I don't see it anywhere, so I'm just plain curious.
Well, we don't, we don't financially contribute to Riverfest, and they, you know, they do support local events as needed. But that's not a budget line that we've ever considered. And truthfully, I find through Riverfest, though it does bring, you know, 10,000 people to town over the course of that weekend, a lot of that business is focused...
At the fest.
At the festival. And with an ever-increasing food vendor quotient, like, the restaurants in the village, I mean, we are, we are growing anyway. So I'm not sure if the old summers are the way that they're going to be, but it used to be the case that during Riverfest, there was no increase in business at all. In fact, we probably saw a decrease in business during, because everyone is at the festival enjoying the music.
Great, thanks for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Counselor McDonald?
Through you, Deputy Mayor Jefferson. Thank you, McLean, for coming. You guys have done a lot of hard work, I see here, and your, your administrator, she's doing a great job. Sensational Alora and Monster Month, is that big-ticket item every year that you guys have been paying that? I'm sorry, I haven't seen the budget from last year, so I just want, if you could clarify that.
Well, last year was $17,000 that went to Monster Month, but that was a one-off.
And then previous year to that?
Previous, I, I believe that it was $1,000.
Oh, wow.
To, to, to three, this, I think it was $1,000 that we were giving to Monster Month, which really doesn't do anything for Sensational Alora. It doesn't really cover any of the, it's just sort of like a drop in the bucket for their operating expenses, which are closer to $15,000 a year, to my knowledge, like, just purely running the event, cost them that much.
And is it the, it's, or if I can have some leeway, is it the, the goal this year to do the same thing with Monster Month, like, to continue in...
Not, not at a seven, not the $17,000 commitment. This year is a $3,000 commitment.
Okay.
So greater than before, but not $17,000.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
More questions? Counselor Evi?
Thank you so much, once again, Deputy Mayor. I wanna say something that's very unique about Alora is that so much of the work that you do is done at no cost for the people that visit, and, and that doesn't go unnoticed. You know, so many of the events that you hold and the activities that you get behind, you're not garnering revenue from, and that, that definitely doesn't go unnoticed, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions from McLean? No? Very good.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks. Alrighty, for our next delegation, it will be Stephen Kittriss, resident.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council. It's different being at this side of the... I'd like to apologize. I had a lot of spelling errors in my publication that I gave out. I was a little rushed, and I didn't do a spell check, and so I made, circulated a revised one that has a kind of list briefly what I would like. I'd like to, my talk here to divide it into what I'm asking for, but also make a few comments on the budget, both capital and operations, especially the staffing component. So generally, what I'm asking for here is that this council create a public advisory finance committee. I believe that the early public engagement with a committee would be beneficial for a budgeting process. As it is now, the public engagement right now is at this time, the capital budget you've already passed, and, you know, nobody can comment on it. And having it early, public can engage and be part of it earlier. And they also can solicit the public to be engaged. I also would like to add that economic diversity and budget discussions is important to myself, and I think it's important to the community. Most of the people in, that are doing the budget are higher economic, and very few of those people that are economically disadvantaged will be coming here to discuss things with you. And so I think that having somebody on a committee or having a component of that in, in a, in a budget committee would be beneficial for a budgeting process. There isn't anybody here on this council that is from really a rural or an agricultural background, and I think that that is missing on this thing. Even though you represent areas that are rural and that you have people talking to, it is beneficial to have an actual person on a budget process that is involved in actual farming and doing that. That helps in the decision-making, because they have concerns that rural ones don't. I mean, urban, which is, I know it's the majority of the population and the thing, but a lot of the assets that are deficits are in the rural area, and that's, a voice on that, on a, on a committee would be beneficial. I also believe that accounting experience would be helpful to council, and I think that having someone with a costing background or financial business would be helpful in the budget process for this council, and would help for probably better quality questioning, and also the engagement would be much more deeper, because they could maybe question some of the assumptions that are made within the budgeting process at the present time. I think that, that's the, basically, if you have any questions more about that, you can ask me at the end of the thing. Now, about the budget itself, I'd like to thank the staff for doing the budget. I think the budget was, it was a lot of work. It's a very, very hard time inflation-wise, and also with interest rates and the economic climate. There are a few assumptions made in the budget, and the assumption is that perhaps interest rates might go down, and also that there wouldn't be a recession. I believe that there will be a recession strongly. I think that all the economic indicators are there, that there will be. And just as the town had difficulties and problems, well, every citizen does, and their implications by increasing their taxes is another burden on them. So I think that, that we're more in a stagflation, where there will be slower growth. I know that all the talk is that we're going to be growing, and it's an 18-year-old, 18-year goal that we're gonna achieve that. But there will be recessions and lulls, and at that time, in the budgeting process, I think it's beneficial to consider the economic burden on residents and citizens, especially those of lower income. And so basically, I think the inflation thing is, is along. There's a lot of factors in inflation that could take an hour to do that, so I'm not gonna talk about that. that could take an hour to do that, so I'm not going to talk about that because there's many things that are out of your control. But there are things that you can do and basically your response to inflational environment is controlling costs. And that is the response that a municipality can make, they can control costs and the only one that is really the major cost would be the staff, that is the major one, any business does that, that's a staffing concern. And so I would like the budget to reconsider and using the building reserve for the building department to perhaps subsidize between 20 and 50% of their wages to reduce the tax load for residences. And the building reserve is several hundreds, if over millions of dollars. I also believe that the positions that we revise those and only do those that are legally required. If it's legally required, you don't go through the matrix that you're doing, you just, you require that, so you must have that position. But if it's not actually a legal requirement, I think you should review adding more staff at this time. The staffing matrix that was given, it wasn't presented by the human resource, but basically that matrix is biased and it's 100% biased towards the staff's consideration. It doesn't have, it's not actually a business plan to defend the positions and it's not what you would call classic cost benefits. So it doesn't have that component, that would be what a taxpayer would want to see in a budget and a staffing matrix. So in private sector, that would be 100% of the reason why, and I understand that we're a public. So at least 50%. So the way it's scored is it gives all these different scores, but first of all, there is no cost benefit analysis, which is the benefit to the taxpayer. And the second part of it is, is that the scoring for that should be at least 50%. And the other 15% was the concerns of the staff and the legal part. The legal part is a non-sayer. You need, if it's a legal position that you need, you need to add that to your roster because it's legally required and you might be penalized, especially let's say for sewage treatment or water. On the capital budget, unfortunately it's already passed, but I would like this council to reconsider the operational facility. Now, I know during the election, it was kind of a closed debate and it didn't actually present an option that I think now is much more viable because of the economic situation of saving $10 million of debt by sharing the costs with the county. Mapleton did a joint county and Center, their municipal sharing of an operation facility. I think that right now that should be opened up and that should be reconsidered. I think it would be great if you came into your next election saying, "I saved $10 million on our debt" and that debt, the flexibility on that debt can be used for attainable housing. Now, I'm going to talk about, I'm going to have a few things about the attainable housing. How many, one minute?
One minute left, thank you.
Okay. Well, attainable housing is, was an election issue, but I see none, no, one item on that on this budget. And I think that you could use, instead of using the OLG funds to add to the asset management, I think that you should try to change that matrix to allow for funding of attainable housing with the OLG funds and build up that reserve because I can tell you as a taxpayer, I do not want my business and my tax to subsidize developers for attainable housing, which is what Doug Ford wants. Finished, sorry. Questions?
That's great, thank you. Questions for Mr. Kittriss? Counselor McDonnell?
Through you Deputy Mayor Jefferson, thank you for your presentation. I do like your idea about the operational facility with county and I have been in touch with some county councillors that are opening a door. First, we have to get county to actually want to move it and that's sort of in the discussion phase now and I definitely would love to see us pair up with something like that to reduce costs, for sure. And thank you for bringing that. And the finance committee, you know, it is a bit of a solution to have a finance committee and something I look forward to talking about, so thank you.
Okay, no question.
Any questions? Questions for clarification? No? All right. Well, thank you for coming to do your presentation.
Thank you.
Gives us something to think about. Alrighty, and welcome Millicent, we will have to ask Dennis. Thank you Dennis.
How exciting. I'm sorry about that. I want to say greetings and good afternoon to all of you, mayor, deputy mayor, councillors. Congratulations again. I'm so happy to see all of you. I just want to say thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I never in my wildest dream thought this would happen, so thank you very much. I'm so happy to be here. I just feel such a privilege to be called a citizen of Central Wellington and to be living in the surrounding areas of Wellington County with such a watch, just a rich, vibrant history. In December 2018, when I moved here and I was doing the historical research, I was blown away by the rich black history. It was so hidden, I was like, why is not one shouting from the rooftop and say, "Hey, the Underground Railroad ended here" or something, but for some reason it just, people just felt, in my opinion, that they just, there was, I know there was some sort of ugliness, yeah, that's true, but it was just being a settlement here just, I think, was just so overwhelming and so wonderful. And of course, in December 2021, I formed the Central Wellington Black Committee. And even though we've just been a year, we have done so many things. Of course, we did the CWA Fund Day, thank you very much for the $1,000, we made it stretch so much. And of course, we did the mayor and councillor debate with very, very thin, thin budget, but we still pulled it off and we were so happy. And we did a lot of things too in between. Well, as you know, February is Black History Month and I think it's just a wonderful opportunity to just highlight the rich heritage here. And Central Wellington Black Committee, we are doing three main events for February. The Global African Icon Mobile Museum, which is inventors, black inventors and inventions and that's going to be held at John Black on February 16th and that was sponsored gratefully by the Upper Grand School Board District. So we're so happy, they're actually taking care of the invoice. However, we have two more events and we have, these are called Awakened Voices, spoken word and music, which will be held on Saturday, February 18th and Saturday, February 25th. And we're seeking $3,000 to cover the event. We wanted to have a great and vibrant event and talent, as the gentleman said, is expensive. And we tried to get local artists, we weren't able to, but we are able to get some artists from Toronto GTA and we have to pay them. We know there, the last time that I did some stuff, that was back in September of last year, we give honorariums, but we feel that we have to pay the artists. Awakened Voices, well, part of the show, the artists are going to be reading from the slave narratives, so they're going to reenact. There was this gentleman, they're called Drew Benjamin, who went around and interviewed former Tharmer enslaved Africans and he wrote this beautiful narrative, so we're going to have them reenact it. So in our area, we have Ida and John Little and we also have Sophia Pooley and we also have Richard Pearpoint. Richard Pearpoint, we're going to be getting from, there's going to be another source for his narratives and they're also going to be performing their own pieces. So we believe this is going to enrich, you know, the already vibrant culture that we have here and give people a really great source of entertainment. So I know it's very late in the game, but I did try other sources and I was unable to come up with the money and this is my last resort. So I hope that you guys will counsel, will look flavorful onto this, so, you know, we will put on a very good show, yes. Oh, sorry. Yes, well, no, I was going to say, but it's okay, I could finish, yes, that's fine. Yes, I am. Yes, I am done. Right, yeah, I could, yes.
Okay, and you ready for questions?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Counselor McDonnell?
Through you Deputy Mayor Jefferson. I've been saying that all day and it's still... Thank you so much for coming and so yes, we're a little bit ahead of the game in our grant process. So the $3,000, that will cover the two dates?
The two dates, right.
Completely?
Completely.
And no artists from the area could?
Yes, we tried and I've been advertising for the past, formerly online social media for the past four weeks.
Okay.
And, but you know what, that's a very good question because I would love to have artists from this area.
Okay.
Yeah, we had one person, but I think she was very shy.
Yeah.
And said she would supply the writings but not speak, but we have tried.
Okay.
Yeah, if you notice on our social media, we have been asking and putting out the notice and asking for artists, sorry about that. Counselor?
I'll wait, thank you so much.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Counselor Eboy?
Thank you through you Madam Deputy Millicent, you know, I'm a huge fan, thank you so much for joining us. My question, I look to CIO Wilson about process, obviously, a lot of people come asking for money and there is a very real process and I'm so new that I don't know what that process is and what that looks like when we have locals coming to ask for money in the 11th hour. I would imagine there would need to include things like budgets and proposals and everything else before you ask and would it be a one-off? I just wonder if we can offer a little bit more information to Millicent at this time so that whichever way we go, there's clarity around what happens next or what needs to happen next.
May I answer the budget? I did send the budget to the mayor. Yes, we did send the budget.
Just a quick comment, we will, staff will follow up with Millicent tomorrow if you have time and then have a conversation, but all of the items from the delegations today will be discussed further on Wednesday morning when we talk about the budget further.
Counselor Welton?
Thank you. I've asked a lot of questions today. Thank you so much, Millicent, for your presentation, really appreciate it. I actually just want to know a little bit more about the events and where are they being held and are they open to everybody and that kind of thing?
The event is free. I wanted to have a free event because I wanted the entire community to come out, whether or not they have budget or not. I mean, we are in very tough times and I realize that in February, there's not a lot of entertainment going on, so I don't want someone to say, "Okay, am I going to buy food or go to this event?" Right? So they could just come and maybe have drinks. It's at the brew house, yes, it is at the brew house and it is free and as I said, it's called Awakened Voices. So what we're trying to do is, you know, back then, people were not able to speak, right, freely and a lot of them, they put their voices through the narratives, right? So we want to have those voices come alive, right? And a lot of these voices are going to be from this area, right? So they were living in this area, walked on these platforms going up to wherever, a river, back and forth, but they did not have a voice. So we want to reenact their voices, yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? Nothing? No? Okay, that's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. Okay, that presentation brings us to the end of our day, so we can do a motion to adjourn? Okay, hold on now. We have Counselor Welton, Hoover Secunder, Counselor Adams, and then all in favor? Are you sure? Okay. Matt Carries. And we will be back here Wednesday morning, 9:00 AM? 9:00 AM? Thank you.